You're all set to get started.
You not gonna countdown?
I can. We'll go live in three, two, one.
Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board, and this is a special meeting of the Select Board for Monday, October 30th, 2023. Let's start off with any announcements or updates from members of the Select Board. I don't see any hands up.
Hmm.
Let me think. Is anything I can say? Okay, let's just.
How compelled? You wanted a short meeting.
Yeah, right. Okay. Next, public comment. Devin, could you read the rules and get us started on public comments?
Thank you for joining us for a public comment. This is an opportunity for us to hear your perspective on the issues in Brookline that matter to you. Each person is limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may if you like. We encourage you to refrain from personal attacks or from addressing personnel issues during your comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions during public comment. We may be able to provide a quick answer, but are more likely to work with staff offline and respond via email. When you have 30 seconds remaining, we will let you know. Conclude your remarks once you hit your time. If you have more to say, you're more than welcome to send email to board members or stay until the conclusion of the Select Board's business. The first person signed up for public comment.
Devin, Devin?
Yes.
Can I interrupt just a second?
Yes.
I just want to add one other thing, and that is tonight's discussion of the Warren articles is not a public hearing. We won't take public comment at that time. So if you have anything to say about the Warren articles, now is the time to speak. That's it. Okay. Who's first?
Okay, so I'm going to promote David LaScoye. And I want to make the board aware that David requested a little bit of extra time in advance. He'll have four minutes to make his comments. And that will begin, David, when you're ready.
Okay, thank you, Devin, for getting me on the screen and with a, I wanted to make a quick comment about Warren article. Seven, water and sewer discount. I'm a member of the Advisory Task Force, Director J. Harris. I've been working on water and sewer rates for some years, although my comments tonight are on my own behalf, not on the behalf of the department or the division. The town must file a home rule petition seeking the authority to preserve the current 50% discount and allow for any further discounts, as you'll hear later when you get into the deliberation on the Warren article. Surely today I'm speaking to the choir when I say that this is not too much to ask. Our Judeo-Christian tradition and the teaching from the prophets of all faiths on every continent since ancient times is that the true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members. For example, in Deuteronomy, it says, "Bring all the tithes of that year's produce and store it in your towns, so that the Levites, who have no allotment or inheritance of their own, and the foreigners, the fatherless, and the widows who live in your towns, may come and eat and be satisfied." The Poor Law, Poor Relief Law Act in 1901 codified care for the impoverished in England, living a mandatory poor rate on every parish, expanding the role of the overseers of the poor, establishing a connection of poor rate relief from property owners, and creating a sense of social order among the impoverished people. In Massachusetts, the 1769 Poor Law gave the local governments the power to raise taxes as needed and use the funds to build and maintain all houses to provide indoor relief, in other words, cash assistance for the aged, handicapped, and other worthy poor, and the tools and materials required to put the unemployed to work. This system came under strain during the Industrial Revolution as people moved from the countryside into towns in different patterns of employment. Eventually, the role of government grew to meet this challenge. Abraham Lincoln viewed the role of government more broadly as doing for the people what they what they cannot do for themselves or cannot do well in their own separate and individual capacities. Franklin Roosevelt's New Deal lessened the effect of economic irregularities and established a solid platform of security, extended social security, unemployment compensation, old age pension, health services later enhanced with Medicare, Medicaid, and the Affordable Care Act, public housing, the minimum wage.
You have 30 seconds.
Education. Brookline is a primary tier of the safety net for children, senior citizens, affordable housing, veterans, public health, and those who lack the necessities of life. Is preservation and extension of the water and sewer discounts really too much to ask? Is it okay to further delay delivering this relief? Prompt action will mean a great deal to our neighbors who are struggling to afford the necessity of life. Thank you very much. David LaScoye, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 11.
At this time, there are 11 attendees. And no one has used a hand raise or a Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Okay, let's move on. We have a miscellaneous agenda. Let's see. Question of approving the following Select Board meeting minutes, October 17, 2023, and October 24, 2023. Any edits or corrections from the Select Board? No? I move approval of October 17 and 24, 2023 minutes. On favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyet?
Aye.
Miriam's not here yet. Mike Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Next, question of approving a transfer of $50,000 from the Select Board's ARPA contingency fund to the Select Board's Office's operational budget for the purpose of engaging the services of Dr. Gerald Cox, Ph.D., for an operational and analysis project with a budget not to exceed that amount and authorizing the town administrator to execute a contract for the same. Mr. Carey, could you elaborate to make sure that people understand what this is about?
Sure. So this is a proposal that's been in the works for some time that we have discussed in other contexts, sort of part and parcel with the broader sort of operational efficiencies that we've been discussing. Dr. Cox has historically worked with the Brookline Police Department on a number of issues. He's also one of the, he's one of the main consultants that they bring in when they appoint senior staff. He's been instrumental in kind of the work, particularly with regards to racial reconciliation and issues of class and race, since they relate not just to policing, but sort of, you know, community relations in general. That's his area of expertise. I've asked him to come in and basically look at the history, the current history of the relationship between the police department and town services as a whole with the aim towards, you know, ensuring that the department, especially after the last several years, where there hasn't been permanent leadership and there's been a lot of upheaval, is supported by both Town Hall and the broader community, and there are processes and procedures in place to ensure that the department has that support that it needs in regards to, you know, how we communicate our messages out to the broader community, how we ensure that rank and file members feel heard and integrated into the, you know, into the public service, all of those areas. And I think Dr. Cox is really just an excellent, an excellent people person when it comes to those things, and he's going to provide a lot of support and benefit. He's well known to the department. He's well liked in the department. And he just has the background and qualifications that I think are going to be really effective in terms of bettering that relationship.
Can I just say, I agree. Dr. Cox is great for this role. But also, I think what you're also talking about is the need to communicate with the community as to, you know, the role of police and sort of non-strictly police type of activities, such as engaging the work of our social workers who are assigned to the police department to certain situations involving crises that people have. I mean, the fact that those social workers in this instance, you know, are assigned to the police department really has legal significance, and, you know, people don't always realize that in terms of, you know, privacy issues as well as, you know, just how the services can be effectively provided within, you know, the overall structure of, you know, social services in the state. So I think that's an accurate statement. So it's more than just internal communications. It's really communications with the community.
Yeah, speaking and making sure that the town is speaking with one voice and that, you know, as part of the, as part of the team, the department has the support that it needs to do to conduct its mission, which is so important, public facing.
Any questions from the Select Board? Okay, I move approval of the transfer of $50,000 from the Select Board's ARPA contingency fund to the Select Board's Office Operational Budget for the purposes of engaging the services of Gerald Cox, Ph.D. for an operational analysis project. And as it says here, we don't expect it to get up anywhere near $50,000, but we just.
No, this is just, this is a, this is a budget for safekeeping. And again, this is one of several different, you know, this, this, this does have pandemic-related roots, you know, so many of the issues, I think, departmentally were exacerbated, as for many first responders, by the, you know, the stresses of the pandemic and the issues surrounding it. My hope is obviously that it comes in under budget and that as part of our discussion in December about the broader long-term budget, that we have a discussion dedicated particularly to ARPA-related issues and what our third round of ARPA projects is going to look like.
Good. Let's see. Did I make a motion already? I think I did. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyet?
Aye.
And Miriam's not here yet. Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, let's move right along. Warren Articles, as I said before, these have already been subject to a hearing. So there won't be, we won't be taking public comment on any of these. So let's start off with Warren Article 7. Let's see if anyone's interested in this one. Melissa, you can tell us what the Advisory Committee has proposed.
Sure. So the Advisory Committee essentially is referring the Warren article back to the Select Board. The Select Board's current position is favorable action on the article. Paul, I think you might have been at the meeting. You might be able to kind of transmit a little bit more about what happened in the discussion during that meeting, but that's currently where we are with this article.
Yeah, so thank you. I'm happy to walk my colleagues through it. So first, by a way of a little bit of background, as you recall, this Warren article, essentially the same type of article, was recommended four years ago for the November 2019 Town Meeting by then Town Councilman Jocelyn Murphy. And she had, after a review and investigation with the Department of Revenue and others, had come to the conclusion that in order to continue to offer senior and other discounts on water and sewer rates, that we needed to ask for enabling legislation from the state legislature. At that time, Town Meeting approved overwhelmingly by a voice vote. The Advisory Committee actually approved it, 23 yeses, I think, three nos, and one abstention or something like that. But unfortunately, if you remember, November was just when we started to hit the pandemic. And at that time, our beloved former town clerk, Pat Ward, also shortly after that, I think he had an accident. But as a result, through all the different changes that responding to the pandemic, the approval letter at seeking our state rep to bring it and represent it to the great honorable court did not happen. If you remember my second Select Board meeting, I believe I might have bloodied my nose a little bit when I bumped up to this issue, when I tried to make an amendment, a slight amendment to the senior discount program. And at that time, our current Town Council, Joe Callan, said that "We don't have the enabling legislation, and we need to refile it because you only have a year to act on it." So it ran out of steam. So we filed the article. It was unanimously supported by this board. It went to the Advisory Committee, and they had a different take on it. They, you know, there's this, now this mentality, which I disagree with frankly, but the mentality is that we don't want to burden the court, we don't want to burden the state legislature with home rule petitions. But we burden them regularly with home rule petitions, and it's the way that you ask the General Court to authorize you to do things. So prior to the referral by the Advisory Committee, there was an amendment that was made to the article to clarify it. I'll display that in a moment. And then there was another amendment that was approved by the moderator on behalf of Susan Granoff, who was heading the subcommittee on this article, and it was approved as well. So what I'm suggesting we do this evening is, one, to adopt the amendments that were in fact approved by the Advisory Committee. I think they're good amendments. It clarifies the discount program, certainly for seniors. Someone was worried on advisory that Robert Kraft was going to get a senior discount for his water, and that is certainly not the intent, to give Robert Kraft a break on his water bill. And so I'd like to make a motion to accept those, and then I would make a motion to, again, affirm our favorable action on seniors. Here's my, here's my primary concern about this. We've already lost four years of time through a mistake of, you know, just a set of circumstances. And what we are asking the state legislature to do is to authorize us to develop a program that, you know, give us that authorization. Other communities, I spoke with former Town Councilman Jocelyn Murphy this morning. When she researched it, this is how other communities, in fact, had requested and gained approval from the state legislature to develop their programs. So we're not asking anything that's unusual. This is just a normal course of business to submit articles of this nature, request for authorization to the state legislature. So that's my update. You know, I'm happy to have a discussion. If it would be helpful to show you what the amendment looks like, I'm happy to do that.
That would be helpful.
All righty, here we go. Let me share my screen.
I can see Miriam. I'll give it to you.
So this is, are you able to see my screen? Okay.
Yep.
Lovely.
Wait, is that, so that, I thought that was an old amendment.
No, we never, we never voted on this, Bernard. This was what was suggested by Advisory. Advisory actually accepted the income-eligible amendment, which is the underline there.
Right.
And then, and then they voted to refer it. And then Susan Granoff asked for reconsideration because she had voted to refer it, so she could, I think, reconsider it. And then she added this one other amendment, which was to charge for, charge two to four. Both of these amendments have been accepted by the moderator. The income-eligible was adopted by Advisory. And I see hands are up. Do you want to call on them, Bernard?
Pardon me?
You have some hands up. It's your meeting.
Yeah, I know, I know. Well aware of that. Okay, Miriam?
Great, thank you. I'm going to keep it short and sweet. I think the amendment is fine. I would have voted for this without the amendment because I'm not that worried about Kraft asking for this discount. That said, I accept the amendment. I do not accept referral. This is ridiculous. We should just do this. This benefits a lot of people who really need it. You have my support. I hope we vote favorable action on this amendment as amended, on this Warren article as amended.
Okay. John?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Paul. I will likely, likely vote to stick with our original vote, which was to send this to the legislature. I do hope, though, that we give a slightly more thorough account of the issues that are at stake here because when it likely turns out that the legislature doesn't act on this, I want people to know that we were advised that the legislature likely wouldn't act on this. And yet, you've heard, you've heard what people have said. They want to go ahead, and they want the legislature to basically prove to us that they're likely not going to act on this. Okay, but it's not perfect. And as an example of how it's not perfect, I would say just, just read it. It has this odd and to me, unnecessary duplication of, "We want to give discount rates to income-eligible residents, and we want to give discount rates to income-eligible residents over age 65." I'm not sure what that means. I assume income-eligible residents includes people over age 65. Why we need to sort of double-load this with both categories, when both categories are covered in the overall category of income-eligible residents is kind of a mystery. And actually, you know, to give Representative Vitolo his due, I don't think he would agree that what his message is, is that the legislature doesn't want to be bothered with this. I read his message as being "A better form of this would be something more specific as to the discounts that we intend to try to offer, and that the legislature is likely to reject something as generalized as this in addition to being as late in the session as this." So the final word on this, as far as I'm concerned, from my vantage point is, if we don't think this is going to do any harm to the credibility of our state legislator, Representative Vitolo, by virtue of making him the carrier of something that his colleagues have no intention of passing, then that's fine. But he's tried to persuade us on numerous occasions, not just this one, that we do damage to our other agenda items and his ability to get through the legislature when we add everything, including the kitchen sink, to the number of home rule petitions that we are asking him to bring to the legislature each year. So I keep hearing people saying none of this matters, and I did vote that we go ahead and pass this on to the legislature. So I'll stick with that, but I think we should be upfront with people as to what the, you know, what the true level of concern is in terms of why we might want to think twice about doing things like this in the future.
Okay, Mike, Mike Sandman. And by the way, let me just be clear to people that what John is suggesting, that we reaffirm our original vote for favorable action, but without the additional language regarding allowing.
No, I'm okay with the additional language, Bernard.
Did our original vote have the additional language?
Yes.
No. The original vote, the original vote had seniors and income, it had residents age 65 and over and income-eligible residents. It had both of those. That was, that was, this was drafted by Town Council and Commissioner Shute.
Well, I believe the amendment was that we added, that the Advisory Committee advised adding the phrase "income-eligible" in front of seniors.
Correct, to keep Robert Kraft from getting a discount. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we did vote A and B.
Yes.
Not that, right, not the amended language. It's currently on display in front of you. You'd have to vote to adopt this amendment.
Okay, I don't mean to be dense here, but.
No, it's fine, yeah.
What is the additional language?
It's wet black, so can you see that? So Bernard, there's a cross-out for the word "charge." That word is being taken out. Four is being added in its place, and then "income-eligible" has been added to qualified residents age 65 and over.
Okay, I got it. Okay, did someone else have a hand? Oh, Mike, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Bernard. First of all, I would say after Sunday, I think Bob Kraft deserves a little sympathy, even if he may not deserve the discount. The, the language is fine. The change in the small additional language is fine. I think, honestly, it's, it's, State Representative Vitolo does a wonderful job for Brookline, and I can appreciate that he'd like to have the inbox be a little bit more more prioritized, but just the same, you know, his task is to take what we provide in home rule petitions and do what he can to bring them through the legislature. And I believe that this, while it's late in the session for 2023, this will survive into the next session. And in fact, as a practical matter, we might not even get it in before the end of the year. So, you know, I think this is as good a time as any, and perhaps even a little bit better time than most to try it again.
Okay, my two cents are I'm willing to vote or reaffirm our original vote. However, I don't think we should minimize the impact this could have on our long-term goals with respect to senior issues. I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that Tommy Vitolo is definitely committed to work on behalf of the needs of our senior citizens, both here in Brookline as well as throughout the state. And I don't take lightly his concern that when we come back with really important things that have a chance of passing, that we don't get a sigh from the legislature saying, "Here they come again." That's a risk we take, and it's not a small risk. But, you know, let's see, let's see what happens.
Yeah, I will, I will say, Bernard, since, just in closing comment, that, you know, what's changed since this was passed overwhelmingly in 2019? Seniors are more burdened than before. They were decimated by COVID. Inflation is, it certainly had a major impact on vulnerable groups like seniors and other income-eligible residents. Things are not better, they're actually worse for our most vulnerable goal, and we're hearing that. The only thing that's changed is the mentality about potentially burdening the legislature. And I think we need to do two things at once. We can walk and chew down, as my good friend Jazz Carey has said to me a number of times, we can submit this.
Voting Lyndon Johnson.
And we can submit this to the legislature, and at the same time, we should start getting to work with the Water and Sewer Commission and Citizen Advisory Group to start developing the program. So should the state legislature surprise us and come back with authorization, we can implement the program. Should they decide that we're not worthy because of what, there's not enough detail, we could submit another home rule petition when the other one runs out or sooner that replaces it with the details that we want. We just can't afford to lose another two to four years because we dropped the ball four years ago. My two cents.
Okay, you want to make a motion then?
Yes, I'd like to move that we amend Warren Article 7 as described in the.
Excuse me, excuse me, Paul. Just procedurally, I think the board needs to have a motion to reconsider, and then you can take that. Sorry.
Move to reconsider Warren Article 7.
On favor of reconsideration of our original vote on Warren Article 7, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyet?
Aye.
Miriam Ashenazi?
Aye.
Michael Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Now, I apologize for that. Make your motion with.
I move to amend Warren Article 7 as described in our packet and as displayed on the screen.
Okay. All in favor of a motion to give favorable action as indicated, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoyet?
Aye, and this is favorable action to the amendment. The aye, and this is favorable action to the amendment, correct?
Correct.
Correct, right.
Yeah, aye.
Uh, Mary Amashkenazi.
Aye.
Uh, Mike Sandman.
Aye.
You're not on my screen, Mike. Uh, Paul Warren.
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
I now uh move fa- I now move favorable, uh, that uh we uh vote favorable action. On uh move favorable action on Warren Article Seven as amended.
Wasn't that just what we did?
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, excuse me. Okay, I move uh favorable action on Warren Article Seven as amended, please indicate by saying aye if you agree, um, John Van Scoye.
Aye.
Mary Amashkenazi.
Aye.
Michael Sandman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
And Bernard, I have one other motion that I put in the packet, um, that I'd like to offer with respect to Warren Article Seven. I'd like to move no action on the advisory committee's recommended for referral.
Um, by, didn't, don't we implicitly? Say that by.
Need to be more implicit. Oh, we don't have to.
Melissa, is that necessary?
So you should have taken the referral motion first and then, and then taken the amendments.
Oh, I listen to you. Okay, let's, let's just do belts, belt and suspenders, uh. I move um, uh, uh, no action on the warrant on the advisory committee's. Um, motion to refer to the select board on favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Scoye.
Aye.
Mary Amashkenazi.
Aye.
Um, Mike Sandman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving right along, uh, Warren Article Eight, I understand is um no longer um live.
So Warren Article Eight, um, the board previously voted favorable action. Um, during the time of review, uh, there was a change in state law that actually allows us to take advantage of increasing. Um, the work off program for seniors, um, but we can't change it to the full extent of the change in law. So um, what we are recommending is that there's no action on the current article and then in the spring we'll refile. Um, that allows us to go up to the new state maximum.
So we need to uh, uh, have a motion for uh reconsideration. And then a motion for uh no action on. Um. No action on Warren Article Eight, so on favor of uh reconsideration of Warren Article Eight, our original vote, which was favorable action. Please indicate by saying aye, John Van Scoye.
Aye.
Mary Amashkenazi.
Aye.
Uh, Mike Sandman.
Aye.
Paul Warren.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, now the fun part. Special.
Now, now you do actually make a recommendation for no action. Uh, and I do, I know, so many votes, so little time. I also want to just briefly, while we have it, thank. Lincoln Hyman and Ruth Ann Dobek, who are both in the audience for their work on this. And uh Joe Callan and the Town Council's Office for working through to make sure that we were. Uh, had the right procedural uh mechanism here, um, looks like we're going to be able to expand. Some opportunities right away, which is great, and then we'll be back in the spring to fully expand it further.
Okay, great. Again, I apologize, I'm reading my notes and it's, I don't, so aren't always complete. Um, okay, so now uh I move uh. Uh, no action on Warren Article Eight, now that we've reconsidered. Um, on favorite, please indicate by saying aye, John Van Scoye.
Aye.
Mary Amashkenazi.
Aye.
Mike Sandman.
Hey.
Hey. You mean aye?
Aye.
Okay, Paul Warren.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, now we can get to Warren Article, or not Warren Article, but Special Town Meeting Number Four and Warren Article One on that.
So, um.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
Um. Okay. Um. So we're, we're gonna vote on Warren Article. One of Special Town Meeting and assuming that passes, we're also gonna vote on the consist. The backup article. Okay, just make sure that. Everyone in the audience is clear. Okay, Paul, you wanna walk us through this?
Uh, I, I guess I, I will first defer to staff first. Melissa, is there anything you want to say about this or would you open?
I, I'll give you my understanding and then you can fill in the detail, how about that?
Okay, great.
So, um.
Warm understanding?
We have common understanding.
Last week, uh, the board voted favorable action on the article. Uh, since that time, the advisory committee has taken up some amendments. Most of those were proposed by um EDAB. Um, and then I think there might have also been a few um typo corrections that they made as well. In your packet, you have um a memo or um materials from the advisory committee laying out what those changes are. Um, there were also amendments proposed by the planning board. Those have been rejected by the moderator. They're no longer in scope. Um, I'm also hearing that there are amendments currently um. Proposed by Dick Banka, but I have not seen those. Uh, I'm also hearing that Linda Pelkey and John Doggett are making some friendly amendments. They're currently working with Jonathan Simpson on those. I think um Kara is also in the audience, um, if we need her to kind of help us. Um, the HAB is also taking up amendments that were sent by Roger Blood on Thursday. Um, she has attached that, so I do have an, um, if you don't have them, Paul, I have the HAB amendments. Um, and I think if there's anything else you want to add, but I think that's where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you. So you added a few things I wasn't aware of, but that's not unusual. Um, so uh first to, to add on to what Melissa said and to emphasize it. The last time we met, we voted the package of. Amendments uh that were agreed to by Brookline by Design and, and yes, at Brookline. Um, and those were incorporated into our version of the article. Um, last Tuesday, the advisory committee met at the same time that we met. And they um, they adopted all of those amendments. And plus, as Melissa said, a couple more, I can display these in a moment if it'd be helpful. Um, you know, something from um, from EDAB that had to do with some language saying there was a parking change, there's been a Scrivener's error. Um, so that's, that's a set that will make, essentially make uh us compatible. Um, with advisory, which I, I, I would, I would strongly recommend. The other, um, there is, there was an amendment that Melissa just mentioned. That as part of the yes and Brooklyn, Brooklyn by Design, their agreement, they modified setbacks and there was a ability to go for um. A review by the planning uh board. Um, and, and, and to be able to shorten that, uh, make the setback smaller. Um, it was discovered that that change that we, that we approved. Um, actually ended up creating an inconsistency in the article that was brought to the attention of uh Jonathan Simpson. Um, as well as I, I think Kara and Maria Morelli. Um, and they agreed that there was an inconsistency, Jonathan suggested some language. Uh, that was um agreed to uh within scope by the moderator this afternoon, Assistant Moderator Gatsby. Um, I, I was uh on the phone for the last minute before I joined this meeting with Brookline by Design and yes, at Brookline. And they have both agreed that this amendment uh is necessary and that it does not change their agreement, which we don't want to have changed. Um, so they, it's, it is, as Melissa says, a friendly amendment. So what I'd like to do uh with your permission is to share my screen. Show you the uh set of amendments from advisory that they voted last um Tuesday. I think fifteen minutes after we uh ended up adjourning our meeting. Um, and then I can, we could, I would suggest we vote, um, discuss and vote on those possibly. And then I can move to the other amendment, uh, and then perhaps uh adopt that. And then Melissa, I, I, you, I, I'm not familiar with what's going on with the HAB or what changes Mr. Banker may have been proposing.
I have both, I have both the Banka amendments and the HAB amendments. I can pull them up on my screen when you're ready.
So should I share, uh, should I share the AC one first?
You, you start and then we can jump in when you're done.
Okay, here we go. Uh, this was in your packet, I distributed it last week, I think directly to you and then um it was, it, it is part of the packet. Um, this, this document was uh sent to us uh by uh. Uh, David Pollack. Um, of the advisory committee, uh, and he, this, these are all of the amendments that were voted. Um, by the advisory committee. Uh, last Tuesday shortly after we adjourned, so this is where their version of the article is. Um, the first set of, of these items, you know, item one through um, item eight. Uh, I believe are all the amendments that were uh in the Brookline by Design. And yes, in Brookline Compromise, and we've already adopted those in our article. Uh, the things that are new, uh, I believe that would be in front of you tonight. Are the parking requirements changes, we, there were some changes in parking. Uh, for example, there's just some inconsistencies with hotels requiring two parking spaces, I think that was taken down. Uh, there was a, a Scrivener's error that was found with respect to, I believe, the Housing Advisory Board, um. Uh, the commercial incentive uh that was in there. Um, and then there's a, there was another form-based coding, uh, Article eleven, uh, Scrivener's ever, error as well. Um, all of these are laid out in excruciating detail with, with explanations. I think what I'm gonna do with your permit, with your permission, uh, you can see all these things have been changed and we adopted these already. I'm gonna scroll down. Unless anybody wants to stop on one, um. These are all the yes and Brookline BBD. Uh, amendments for uh, for their agreement.
That we adopted.
That we've already adopted, yes, so here's um.
What we have it.
We already have it, we already adopted them Bernard, so um now we just want to make our. Uh, uh, agreement, I think when we get through this, the motion might be, I would defer to uh Melissa. I believe the motion might be to adopt the advisory committee's amendments as voted. Tuesday, blah, blah, blah. Melissa will have the words for me. Um, so this is um, the, the, the parking change. Um, on, on page uh one seventy-five. Uh, for hotels and hostels use the parking minimum, minimum and maximum from zero to point five spaces respectively. Uh, there is another um change for religious and educational uses. Um, again, to be able to, to have those changes made. Uh, and these were recommended by EDAB. Um. And, and here's, here's the explanation. I'll leave that up to the screen for a moment, uh, lodging hotel, hospital, bed and breakfast. Were considered too stringent at two parking spaces required per room. Since this would essentially block this use from the corridor, it's proposed being changed to a minimum of zero and a maximum of point five. Uh, per room and uh for religious and educational uses, there should be no difference in requirement. In the civic and institutional categories, it's actually unfair, um, so that was, that was changed as well. Um, Amendment Ten here is the affordable housing standards. Uh, there was a Scrivener's error where uh for rentals, it was moved to eighty percent. And the intent uh from uh the HAB and EDAB was for that to be seventy percent. Um, for rentals, so that was, uh, that was changed. Um, seventy percent of AMI, so that was a fix. Uh, and then there's also a Scrivener's error on page two oh two of the Form Based Code. Uh, with respect to uh notifications. And the changes mail notices to town meeting. Instead of meeting meetings, we need to mail it to meeting members, so it is just one of those really important changes. Um. And uh, and then these are, this is all the explanation, it has to do with the parcels that we took out in the buildings, which is the BBB-BBD stuff, which we've already adopted. So with that, I'm, do I want to keep sharing this or you want to stop and talk about it?
I think we've all read that.
Okay, great, so I would, uh, if it's, if it's okay Bernard, if you want to offer a motion, would you like me to offer a motion?
Well, I'd say Kara Bruton's in the audience, uh, uh, do you have anything to add to that Kara?
All right.
Not on those amendments, we have some other amendments, as Melissa mentioned, that we could go over whenever you'd like.
Oh, okay, uh, which will require us to revoke this, right? Okay. And um maybe we should go over that first before we do a, a motion to approve.
Well, I mean, why don't I go through the second um amendment that I have documented and then I can just hand the meeting back over to Kara for, if she wants to do some screen sharing, would that be okay? So the second uh amendment here is. I think it's this one here. Is that water and sewer? I don't know what screen, just give me one second. Be patient with me one moment. Okay, so hopefully you can see my screen here, um, this, this is an amendment. Uh, that um brings consistency. To the, the, the agreement of uh Brookline by Design, yes, and Brookline around uh a special permit. To be able to change the setback uh beyond what it was supposed, wh- what the Form Based zoning asks. It requires a, a public hearing, uh, the, the rear setback. Um, was discovered to have an inconsistency. And another part of the Form Based Code where, for example, if there's a tree blocking a building or. You know, something is impeding the development of the building. Uh, the developer has the ability to go to the planning board uh and have this adjustment made. And the language uh that's in here is just consistent with what the agreement was. It has, as you can see, Jonathan Simpson has marked it up. He made it consistent with what was in the Brookline by Design Agreement, which is already incorporated into amendments that this board uh approved uh last week. So that it really is a simple change and they, and they've all agreed to it, um, so um, at least from the advocacy perspective, it's a friendly amendment.
Look, Kara, you have additional things we have to. Consider.
So I can share my screen and then we can have Kara walk us through, um, let's start with the easier one, maybe the HAB amendment first.
Yeah. And these have not been taken up by the advisory committee, or have they?
I don't believe so. I think these were, these came in after and I don't know whether or not the moderator has weighed in on them either.
Yeah, first, Melissa, the moderator has agreed on.
Okay. Okay, so this is the.
Yeah, the moderator has agreed that the second one is within scope as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is there an explanation for this? Please.
Isn't it obvious? No, just kidding.
So, um.
No.
A fairly small, it has nothing to do with the MBTA Act, um, but it is very important. Um, we are seeing some housing, um, buildings go back in and reconfigure some units. So this um amendment to the Affordable Housing Bylaw. Makes clear that if you're changing an existing dwelling unit. Um, even though it might be within a building footprint that stays the same, that that would still be considered a unit as far as. Um, counting it towards how many units are in a project. Um, so that's what this captures.
Yeah.
So it seems fairly benign, I just want to make sure I'm not missing something.
Yep, looks like that to me.
Alright.
I've also emailed it to you all, um, and Devin will pull it into the packet at some point as well. Let me know when you want to move on to the next one.
Okay, let's move on unless someone has questions or.
So Jonathan, did you say that the Banka amendments have been approved by the moderator?
None, no, I was referring to the one that had my red line on it.
Okay, okay, so this one, um, I don't know that we've heard from the moderator on this. Um, it came in yesterday, obviously, so um, still a little bit of time for that.
So. You want to walk through, Melissa?
I was gonna say Kara, we're gonna need your help with this one.
Okay. So, um, all of these are, um, thanks to Dick Banka for catching, I would. Um, categorize them as making language clear, not having um a policy shift or change. Um, the very first one is actually a catch, thanks to Michael Rubenstein. Um, and that is. That the uh multifamily overlay district. Um, maps do correctly, do not include one seventy-two Fuller Street. And yet the list of parcels does. So the First Amendment is to make the parcel list match up with the maps. And not include one seventy-two Fuller Street. Um, which is, which is on the side. Um, so that's a, a fix. Um, the Second Amendment, um, basically just better defines what does it mean when a building fronts on a street? So we've added a bunch more words to, to better explain, you know, when a building is aligned with the street, that it has frontage on that street. And this is the part of the zoning. Um, that only applies effectively to the Brookline Housing Authority property, which is one very large parcel, so it's difficult to know exactly which will be the front or side lot line. Um, but we do want some flexibility. As can Lois work with them on to have um the taller building. That fronts Walnut Street um versus the, the other buildings on the property. And then the Third um Amendment is again a language change that just makes it more clear how you measure whether something is a first story or not. Um, especially by adding where you're measuring the local. where you're measuring the low point from up to the second story, but the the policy remains the same. The fourth amendment literally just takes out the letter K in referring to a figure, which is just a mistake. And then the fifth amendment, you can scroll down. What it does is it takes out one of the subparagraphs number six because it's very much like subparagraph number four. And it just combines those two and then re-numbers the seventh subparagraph to six. And while we're at it, cleans up language so that instead of seeing having, it says may have. And the story is capitalized. These are pretty minor. The sixth amendment is an important one. We were talking about a roof having a the roof of a dormer having a slope, but we forgot to include that word roof. So nobody knows which slope we're talking about. So that is a very helpful clarification. That there's a defining between a flat roof and and another type of roof is basically what's happening there for gable dormers. And then Amendment seven, you can scroll to the next page, Melissa. There's two figures in the zoning, both of which we fixed this, the three foot versus the one foot minimum dimensions were not correct in the figures, but the figures now reflect the text that's in the amendment. And then Sorry, now I can't get rid of that circle. Number eight is just correcting the letter reference. If you scroll down a little bit. Right, D through J is what's in the warrant article. It should be D through L. We, the committee just added a couple more sections before finally submitting the warrant article. And then the last amendment is again making things more clear in better English. So that it's clear that when you get a partial credit for tree canopy standards that you're required to plant two square feet in the public way. And those, that is it. Those are the amendments.
Hey. Those, I assume advisory committee will adopt them.
They, I was just talking with David Pollack. He anticipates he'll be able to take it up Wednesday night. Especially if the select board takes them up tonight.
Okay, is, are there any questions or objections to us adopting these amendments? Hopefully, the advisory committee will have the same point of view as you expected them, Mike.
I just, I just want to say thank you to, I know Dick and Ken Lewis, and I know staff have worked really hard on getting all these little things tied up. And I'm thinking to myself, I wonder what else is in there that we haven't caught that somebody, some very, very careful reader hasn't caught. And there will be something, I'm sure, that we'll find, you know, we have to make a modification to. But I think I speak for everybody on the board by saying thank you very much. This is extremely helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, there will be other little nits in in this, but hopefully not those that get the attention of the land court or anything like that. So. Okay. Why don't we, I'd like to move approval of Warren Article One of the special town meeting for with all of those amendments. Does that make sense, Melissa?
As as long as there's agreement with the board that you don't want to take any amendments out and both them separately, I think that's fine.
Right. Is there any desire to do that?
I would just say that you would, I think it would behoove you to then why don't you do that and then we'll talk about the backup article.
Yeah, that that's.
Now, just add that the Baker amendments are subject to approval by the moderator.
So if they are not approved, we just have to deal with it next week. So I move approval of, how should I say this? Warren Article One of the special town meeting as amended pursuant to our discussion over the last few minutes. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Mary Maschonazi?
Aye.
Mike Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye with thanks to everyone, including Paul Warren, who did a lot, a lot of work to get this into final form and everyone's agreement. And of course, Cara and her staff, which is incredible. And also all the people on the committees that have worked on this and agonized over it and come up with what I think is a good final result. So.
Bernard, I would like to add one, just one quick, one comment before we go and make a motion on on the contingency article, which is important because we need to be compliant at the end of town meeting. I I do just want to say that it's remarkable that the number of boards, commissions and civic organizations that have been coming out in favor of this. That does speak volumes for the work that everybody has done here and also with staff and and the boards and commissions that this is, this really is a true consensus, negotiated consensus article that I believe is, has incredible support at this point. We heard from the Chamber of Commerce today. We heard from Climate Action Brookline over the weekend. We heard from others out front. We've heard from merchants associations along the Harvard Street corridor, a- a- as well as others. I know ZAB is taking this up next week. And I'm looking forward to hearing their discussion. But the the fact that there are so many in support of this and there's, you know, there's no organized dissent. It really is a testament to how much work has been put in by so many people. And we should feel really good about that. This, you know, I I think you may have heard about Arlington. They had a marathon, multiple sessions with their, with with their MBTA Communities Act. I think they had more than thirteen amendments that they had to work through and it was complicated. And that's not our situation. Our situation is vastly different than what's, that what has gone on in other communities. And that's a testament to the individuals and the advocacy's and the shift and how people are thinking about how to work together and how they can see that collaborating actually does produce positive results for the community. So it really is, it is good news.
Good, good, good. Okay, let's discuss the backup article, Warren Article One of the regular town meeting. Regular special town meeting.
Warren Article Four of Special Town Meeting.
I'm sorry, Article.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, Melissa, you want to walk us through that or?
I think Chaz could probably.
Or we might as well. So you've got, so of the of the proposed amendments that worked through, that you worked through, the extent that any of them are applicable to this backup articles, contingency article, I think you should just vote them through for consistency purposes. So that would be the change to four oh eight, which HAB is taking up the Baker amendments that you just voted through, which have impact on the, which have impact on the M districts. And any of the, any, any, any amendments taken up and approved by advisory last Tuesday as to the contingency article. That just eliminates the one about setbacks and so forth that was, that was worked through by Brooklyn by Design and yes, in Brookline, because that applies solely to Harvard Street.
Okay. Any discussion, any further discussion?
And. Care, I might see any there. I think that's the, that's the. The thing, Chaz, that I would suggest we do is we should, any amendment we make to Article Four of Special Town Meeting One, we should also make it to five. We have a commitment to make sure that those articles stay in parity. So we're gonna do both. Yep, that was my thought. Is that you, you, I don't think you actually made a motion on five. So you don't have to reopen that. You just reopen four. Vote to accept the amendments on four, as we've just discussed, then vote to accept the amendments on five. You can still leave five as is. You don't need to take a position on it.
Are we, Warren Article Five, isn't that Linda Pelkey's duplicate article? Isn't it Special Town Meeting One Article Four? It is the contingency article?
Yes, the duplicate, the duplicate article, which the select board obviously doesn't have control over what what amendments are accepted by the petitioner for Article Five, because it's not the select board's article. But to the extent the select board wants to, you know, maintain parity and just say.
How do we present this, given that it's not on the agenda? Or is that an issue, Jonathan?
That's, I think, one of the reasons I spoke up, Bernard, is that we didn't say we were discussing Warren Article Five today.
We do, we do have the catchall language in there. And, you know, I I think regardless, because it's not your article at the end of the day. Even if you don't take a formal vote on it, it's my understanding that the petitioners of that article, Article Five, are likely to adopt those amendments anyway. So.
So I would just say, Ben Council, any vote on Warren Article Four should include, you know, instruction to staff to forward any changes to the petitioners of Warren Article Five to man to ensure.
Sounds right. Yes. And this really, this is really important because anything can happen at town meeting, as you know, if there is a change to Article Four, you know, it's possible that Article Fives would be moved. And we really do want these things to be identical as much as possible. So.
We have the, sorry to keep this going, but Linda Pelkey is aware of the Baker amendments and agrees to them. I can't remember if she's seen Roger Blinds, but I'm I'm fairly certain she would be okay with those as well.
And I'm not sure that you want to move Article Five. I think you may want to know action vote on five and then you reconsider if things fell apart.
No action or just ignore it? I mean, because it's.
Yeah, you could choose not to move it at all.
Yeah, I I thought what Jonathan suggested is that, you know, just for the record or the legislative history of this, that we instruct staff, Cara, to make sure that petitioners for Article Five are aware of our action.
Well, I can, just quickly, so we, I think we should actually amend, we should amend the Article Fives, offer an amendment. And then. So you. And not, but not move it, right? Is that correct or? You don't have the authority to, you you can offer an amendment, but you don't have the authority to, it's not like, because it's not your. Oh, it's not. Oh, right. Okay.
Okay, so but we we can't, we can offer our suggestion or opinion to the petitioners and they can do with it what they want.
That makes a lot of sense.
Okay, so I'll move favorable action on Special Town Meeting number four. I'm sorry. Of the Special Town Meeting as amended by the changes to section four point oh eight of the zoning bylaw. And as further amended by Dick Baker's amendments and is finally further amended by the AC, the Advisory Committee amendments that all as we have discussed at this meeting.
And the HAB amendments, sorry.
And finally, the Housing Advisory Board amendments, all as discussed by us at this meeting. Here to before. Okay, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. John Van Skoyak?
Aye.
Mary Maschonazi?
Aye.
Mike Sandman?
Aye.
Paul Warren?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Well, that. We will, we will ensure that the petitioners of Article Five are fully aware and apprised of this.
Right.
And just to be, to be clear, our, our prior motion, if it still stands, if it doesn't, we probably need to revoke it. Our instruction to town meeting is that Article Four would be voted favorable action should Article One of Special Town Meeting Four fail, right? Is that what we've, is that the instruction that we've already given? That's still in effect? That's still your instruction, as I understand it.
Okay, and that was given to Sandy?
That was given to Sandy. Yep, I emailed that motion to him. It's actually being made, I think, by you, Bernard.
Yeah, I think you said that what you did was sufficient.
Okay, good. Okay.
Your instructed. Okay, nothing else on the agenda? Any other discussion or new business that people want to bring up? No?
I just want to say that there's a holiday coming up, which is not my meeting today. And I want to wish you all the success in collecting the appropriate candy.
Okay, good. That doesn't look like a scary mask, but rather some type of, I don't know.
It's not scary enough. You migrate and run away from this thing.
Oh, really? Okay, it looks like something that was found in an Aztec tomb or something.
Actually Korean, but.
Paul, are you taking your kids trick or treating or are you handing out candy?
Uh, so I probably, given my current diagnosis of COVID, I'm probably not doing.
Either of those things.
Yeah.
Not doing it. It did, I, it was a Saturday Saturday morning diagnosis. So I'm hoping maybe I'll be cleared up by then. So we'll see.
Right here, Saturday.
And Marion, just so you know that I listen to you. Don't always agree with you, but I do listen to you. I got my COVID shot this afternoon, so.
I'm glad you agree on that, on that point.
No, I agree on a lot of things, so don't worry.
It is, it is, there is a lot of infection going on right now, as Mary. It's, it's very, very difficult to avoid, so.
It's scary. So because no one is really geared up to take the precautions that maybe we should be taking. But, yeah. Anyway, okay, John, did you have a question?
Just a, just a quick question. I just want to confirm our next meeting is November seventh. Is that right?
Yep.
Your next scheduled meeting.
For a week.
November seventh. All right, great.
I will miss. I will be missing that meeting. I'll try to join at the end if I can.
Yeah, good.
I have a day job obligation.
Day job? What's that?
Yeah, exactly.
This is my day job. Okay. Thank you, everyone. That ends the meeting. I'll see you.